All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. My right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and to my left Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Klaus. Calling the meeting to order, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Fournier.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to also start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to build mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. I understand there is a proposal to make two amendments to that. Is there a motion? I move to amend the agenda to add two consent items, 343 and 344, for the HCP land acquisitions. Second. Motion in second to add items 343 and 344 to the consent agenda. Any discussion on that motion? If you now call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is opportunity for the public to address the board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. At our board meetings, however, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate. When called, please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. The board does not respond directly to public comment. On an as-needed basis, the county manager will follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes and may not address or donate any of their time to other speakers. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature, please. No outburst of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promoting a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits, or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board of County Commissioners on appeal. All written materials provided to the county may be considered public records and subject to release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of the revised Code of Washington. So with those guidelines, I'm going to call who's up first, who's on deck, and you'll be able to...
I'm on a Zoom meeting.
Excuse me. Folks that are on Zoom will be called in order. You don't need to sign up in any special way. Your name will be called, and you'll have an opportunity. First up is Kathy Kravitz-Smith, with Elizabeth Smith on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Kravitz-Smith. I live in the Cedar Flats area. I live in Thurston County and vote in Thurston County. Is this on? Okay, thank you. I'm here to request action by you regarding Commissioner Emily Klaus as she awaits the release of a series of investigations. As a former administrator myself, I'm perplexed about the series of investigations that you've conducted and seems to have been used as a pretext to keep Commissioner Klaus from fully participating in her responsibilities as a commissioner. From what I've read, three of you have joined on two occasions in voting to keep Commissioner Klaus from fully carrying out her responsibilities as a commissioner. These actions appear to have occurred with no evidence of wrongdoing of the type that would warrant such severe restrictions. What has been shared publicly is that there was a workplace dating issue. Although it may have been inappropriate and unacceptable, I have not seen evidence of criminality. On September 6th, you promised us the release of an investigation so we, your constituents, could judge for ourselves, but you failed to keep this promise and this commitment, and have yet to release an investigation, to my knowledge. I believe Commissioner Klaus has been forthcoming and has cooperated fully with the process, and a final investigative report exists. The report should be released immediately. Should there be no criminal behavior, I believe Commissioner Klaus has been subjected to enough review, process, and scrutiny to satisfy any need for corrective action. Please release the report and reinstate Commissioner Klaus immediately. And Commissioner Menter, I have copies of this very document.
Okay.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Smith with Kyle Hooper on deck.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Smith. I live on T Street in Grand Mound, Washington. Thank you so much for your service to Thurston County, first of all. I'm here generally to provide my comment in opposition to the Grand Mound UGA rezone proposal of the Wilmowski parcel. I live on T Street. I've lived there my entire life. I had a meeting with about 25 residents of the T Street, Grand Mound area last weekend who just heard about this proposal. The Thurston County notification process for this rezone did not work. These people's lives, livelihoods, homes, families will be deeply impacted by this rezone proposal, should you approve it. The lack of community awareness around the intense level of density was totally inappropriate in this case. The level of density that is proposed for this 30 acres in Grand Mound is stark and extreme. Today, it is a hayfield, surrounded by gentle, rolling hills, and small neighborhoods. This has proposed 464 houses in 30 acres in the middle of my community. Why is this wrong for Grand Mound? First of all, we understand that Thurston County needs more housing. We understand that UGA is where density and growth happens, but this proposal, this density, is inappropriate. It's surrounded by two to six houses per acre. Putting four to 16 in a 30-acre parcel, the farthest away from the dense, from the corridor where public transportation exists, is an inappropriate decision. Put that density somewhere else, closer to the main road, closer to services, where schools can be less impacted. So the lack of community awareness was just the first problem. I'm going to go through the other problems. I've submitted this letter to each of you by email. The current zoning approach around it is two to six acres. This is four to 16 acres. That is too high. It would have to go to the schools across the most dangerous intersection, one of the most dangerous intersections in Thurston County. You'll be putting families and lives in danger in order for those 464 homes to get to the three of the four schools across over on James Road. Lack of available human services in the communities. We don't have a grocery store. We have one deputy that serves South County. We have lack of public safety that we'll be able to provide for these 464 homes. We don't have parks. These houses won't have yards, and we don't have parks and trails in Grand Mound for people to go and play. Today, kids play in the street. This will make it worse. How do you put this many people in this close of a space without parks, without public services, without transportation, without contemplation of the impact on the community around it? It is not good government. It is not the right proposal. I urge you to oppose it. Thank you.
Can we have Kyle Hooper up with Juana Rivera on deck?
Just go in here a second. We'll just time it this way. Go ahead. Let's go. Okay. Hi, I'm Kyle Hooper. I live at 6830 198th Avenue Southwest, just around the corner from the previous woman's testimony. In fact, my dog showed up at her door one day. I really like wiener dogs, so. So this major housing development, I really apologize for not being able to come to the previous actual meetings for this because I work 60 hours a week, and I was working up in Shelton. Otherwise, I would have been here. And plus, because we're literally installing internet and fiber optics, there's no internet out where we are working, so I couldn't even show up on Zoom. And so I say that because there's a lot of people that can't be here today, or even by Zoom, that just aren't even aware of it. In fact, I can honestly say from my personal testimony that there's only one person that I'm personally aware of in our entire neighborhood that's for this, and he's kind of ignorant of the facts. He's just for it because he thinks one day he's going to be able to do the same thing with his land and make a bunch of money. So there's also one other thing that I think needs to be investigated in this. I sent my email to you guys earlier today, is that my neighbor just to my west of me, he passed away about five years ago from cancer. He was one of the original people in this area, and he told me from his own testimony, so I, you know, grain of salt, it needs to be investigated, that he told me that there was a judge who put an order to stop the current development of housing, thick-density housing in that area. I don't know if it's true. I can't verify it, but it needs to be investigated. So in the very least, this proposed UGA expansion needs to be put on pause in the very least, so that way appropriate legal measures can be investigated, so that way more people can have time to actually bring in their own input on this. And you can hear personal testimonies from all of us in this area who are opposed to this, which I personally am, and that is my standpoint on this. And so just to piggyback on what she said, the fire department is already short-staffed, and we're going to be closing two stations. And in fact, the one station over by the IGA in downtown Rochester, I was told, is actually now funded by the Chehalis tribe, not Thurston County. So that's how short resources we are for the current people that live there, let alone bringing in all these new houses. The Sheriff's Department, with Sheriff Sanders, has only one deputy to patrol from the entire west side down to here. It doesn't make sense to be putting this many people into a town that's not even a town. It's not even, it's just a community. It's like, we have Rochester addresses, but we live in Grand Mound. So it just doesn't make any sense to be putting this many people into this area. It should be going into a place for that that can support this amount of people, like Tumwater. That makes sense. This doesn't. So if I could just urge you guys to please, at least in the very least, put this on pause so appropriate legal can be looked into this before we make any sort of a decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Juana Rivera with Dave Toler on deck.
Hello, my name is Juana Rivera, and I live on the corner of 201st, just across where the proposal is going to be. First of all, I want to thank you for your time, for allowing me my concerns. I've lived there for 23 years, and everything has been peaceful or kind of peaceful. First of all, the streets are not safe for this kind, for a high traffic, putting 464 homes. Since I mentioned I live on the corner, my fences have been driven into five times from different people, just because of narrow. I understand about the needs of the growth of, people need homes, but putting 464 homes in there is just high density. Like Elizabeth mentioned, we don't have grocery stores. We don't have parks for children to play. I mean, we don't know, they're saying for the development, it's four to 16 units per acre. We're on a rural place. I mean, even one home per acre. Let us, let us have our input on that. It says it's going to help the community. How is it going to help the community? If we're putting in apartments, duplexes, they don't pay property taxes like homeowners do. So none of that is going to go to the school I have, let's see here, sorry. Also, when it says it's rural, and I own another piece of land, and it's seven acres, and it's not far from the gravel pit that we're also trying to do, expand. I'm trying to do an additional dwelling unit, and I'm not able to do that because I need 10 acres to do so. How are we going to allow this project to put in 464 homes on 30 acres? So I'm just begging you to please keep it rural. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Toler with Sonia Lowery on deck.
Good afternoon. I am Dave Toler, taxpayer that lives here in Thurston County, and I'd really rather be doing other things than being here today. As a former county commissioner, I'm very concerned about the way the county has been politically persecuting one of the commissioners for, what, six months now? It's, Commissioner Edwards had problems, investigations, was found violating state laws more than once, attempted to violate state HR laws to look up another county commissioner's social security number to see whether they were a US citizen or not. And what was the punishment there? I don't recall there being this kind of punishment. But now we have a woman commissioner who has allegations, unproven allegations, and is persecuted and punished before investigation's even done. And what we heard from, what little we've heard from, there are no criminal activities that are done, but the punishment continues for the woman commissioner. That's what we call a culture of misogyny. And I don't think it's what the people of this county support, and I'm particularly disappointed in some commissioners who have gone along with this, because this culture's got to end. The men commissioners do things that are clearly have been proven to be wrong, nothing happens. The women commissioners have purported allegations, and we've got to punish them right away. Oh, absolutely. It's urgent. Meanwhile, the people are paying the price. I've talked to some of the people that are on some of those boards that Commissioner Klaus serves on. There's nobody at the table. There's no voice for the county, for these important services for the county, for what, five, six months? The county's not at the seat of the table, not in the discussion, making decisions that affect the people of this county. All for what? So we can politically persecute one county commissioner who's a woman, that we wouldn't have done if they were male. So, you know, it's just, it's sad. It's sad. I'm disgusted by it, and I would hope we can do better here. And I really appreciate the one commissioner who has a legal background who has said over and over that this shouldn't be happening. Further confirmation to me that this is political persecution and nothing else. I would really encourage you, you've got some pretty archaic HR policies. I think it's time to update them. There's no policy to say anything about, about this kind of thing in your HR policies. There should be. I don't know why there isn't. There are, there are in many other organizations here in the 21st century. And so I really hope that, to be proactive, are you working on that? And can we get our county commissioner, let the voters decide. She's an elected official. Let us decide whether or not she should be on the board. In the meantime, please, let her do her work and let the people of this county be served. Thank you.
Thank you. You're Sonia Lowery with Susan Berry on deck.
Hello, Commissioners and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Sonia Lowery. I've lived over in the Tanglewild neighborhood since about 2005. I have a daughter that attends River Ridge High School, who is very interested in the work you guys do, so thank you for being here. I was here around the same time last year to provide some information on ranked choice voting on behalf of Fair Vote, South Sound, Washington chapter. This cause is very important to me because I don't enjoy negative politics, bipolarization, or the feeling that sometimes as a voter, we're picking the lesser of two evils. These feelings go back to some of my earliest voting experiences in the late 90s and early 2000s. So I'm here again today to ask your support of the Washington Voting Options Implementation, Compliance, and Education and Standards Bill, also referred to as Voices, which will be introduced to the state legislature in the next session. This bill is not meant to dictate that any jurisdiction would have to use ranked choice voting, but it would give any jurisdiction in the state the opportunity to use ranked choice voting if they so choose. Some jurisdictions, such as the city of Seattle, are already planning to use ranked choice voting in local elections in the coming years. The Voices bill would set minimum standards for all jurisdictions to follow. In my opinion, this would lead to consistency across the state when ranked choice voting is used, and also ease the burden on our county auditors and other election officials, so they aren't starting from scratch when this is something that their constituents are interested in. Constituent interest in election reform, including ranked choice voting, is growing locally, statewide, and nationwide. From just Fair Vote, we represent over 500 members in the South Sound chapter. Alaska has recently voted to keep ranked choice voting for their statewide elections. Washington DC electorate voted to use ranked choice voting with an overwhelming majority. It was on the ballot in other states, and while it didn't win with the majority, there was a good showing of votes in support of ranked choice voting throughout the country. I believe that through nonpartisan efforts such as ranked choice voting and other election reform, we can find ways to come together as an electorate from varied backgrounds and perspectives to find our common goals and work toward an effective and productive government. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Berry with Leslie Cushman on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Berry. I'm retired. I live in Lacey at Panorama on the north end, which is in District One. And like my friends and my neighbors, I care about democracy. It's important to me, as I know it is to you, that our elections run smoothly and fairly. And many thanks, by the way, to the Thurston County Auditor, Mary Hall, who does such an impressive job of administering the election process here in our county. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. Sonia and I are here on behalf of Fair Vote Washington. We're here to ask you to support the legislature's consideration of statewide uniform approach for local jurisdictions as they consider the adoption and implementation of ranked choice voting. A draft of such a resolution for your consideration has been submitted via email. Washington has long been a leader in bringing innovations to the voting process. Because of leadership here in Washington State, we have reduced the voting age to 18. We've instituted voting by mail. We've adopted the two-tier vote getter system, as well as same-day voter registration. We passed the Voting Rights Act. We have been, and we will continue to be, on a continuous improvement process for voting. The innovation of ranked choice voting is coming to Washington State. In fact, it's already here. The city of Seattle has adopted ranked choice voting, a system by which a voter chooses for who they want and then ranks their backup choices. It will be in use in Seattle by 2027. Our close neighbors in Portland and Multnomah County, Oregon, have adopted ranked choice voting. Last summer, the Washington State Supreme Court voted or ruled that ranked choice voting is an acceptable remedy for issues presented by the Washington Voter Voting Rights Act. In fact, ranked choice voting is the fastest-growing nonpartisan electoral reform across the country. Advocates for ranked choice voting point to the following benefits: increased incentives for positive messaging, increased incentives for civility in campaigns, encouraging a variety of candidates to run. It makes running for office more feasible as it eliminates the worry of vote splitting. And voters don't have to worry about possibly wasting their vote. Citizens throughout Washington want to see elections continue to be improved. Ensuring consistent processes for ranked choice voting across the state will be important so that transparency and trust are maintained. The cities of Snohomish, Spokane, Gold Bar, Bellingham, Burien, Ferndale, Vancouver, and Olympia, as well as Snohomish County, have called on the legislature to make provisions for this uniform approach. Again, this year, the Washington Voices bill will be introduced to promote statewide standardization.
Can you wrap up?
We urge you to pass a resolution in support of the legislature voting for this bill. Thanks so much.
Leslie Cushman, then I will go to the folks on Zoom, and then I will double-digit your call for anyone who can sign up in the courtroom. Who's Cushman, your informant?
Thank you. My name's Leslie Cushman. I live in the north end of the county. I've lived there my whole life, except when I went to WSU to be indoctrinated by the Cougs. And I'm here offering a few comments on the status regarding Commissioner Klaus. At this point, I doubt that the current investigation and process... At this point, I doubt that the current investigation in process and status imposed on Commissioner Klaus continue in good faith. My perspective is however it started, now the purpose is silencing her, intimidation, and retaliation. Candidly, I think it has a chilling effect on anyone wanting to seek public office in Thurston County. It has been a serious event that has paused people to consider, how could a public process come out this way? Commissioner Klaus was duly elected. If there was a criminal matter, say it. Say it. Arrest her. Put her in handcuffs, whatever you have to do. But she represents a constituency. You all do. And she has general responsibilities. You all do. There's serious work to be done by elected officials. She adds diversity to this commission and it's much needed. Please bring this to a close, reinstate her full authority, and put measurable, transparent policies in place so the public can analyze and evaluate your accountability and your behavior in regard to this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis Spar. I'll call you, and if you do not wish to give testimony, just let us know. Otherwise, you have four minutes. You can't hear your audio very well, sir.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit. Just garbled. I can't hear it. You know, we can tell you're talking, but it's really difficult to understand. Can you say a few more words just so I can hear? Yeah, we really can't hear anything.
Is it a bit better?
A little bit better. Still garbled, but a little louder? Nope. Sorry. I'll double, I'll, I'll, I'll call you back before we leave Zoom and see if we can, okay. I see stop. I see.
How do I speak?
Okay, go ahead. Casey Taylor.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so I, at last minute, had time to write something that I will be emailing you. So I thought if I could just read that to you guys now as my statement. I live in Grand Mound on 198th Avenue, directly across the driveway from the farm that is being requested to be rezoned. So the statement I have made, we live on a somewhat rural street. I've been here for 17 years. It's not as rural as it used to be due to the installed roundabouts and more businesses in Grand Mound. That will be greatly impacted with this increase in houses by more traffic and crime. Currently, this property had been a farm all its life. Some residents have lived here by the farm since the 70s. My husband has lived directly across the street for 25-plus years. As I stated already, I've lived here for 17 years, raised both of my sons, who are both graduates of RHS. We were only given approximately five weeks' notice, and with the holidays in life, it hasn't been much time for me to organize getting this information out to the rest of our community, not just those within the 500 feet, which is all the county notified. This amount of building will not only affect us residents who live next to it, but it will also affect all of Rochester and Grand Mound. The schools that have been overcrowded since I moved here, and probably longer, have been begging for rebuilding and been living out of portables for a very long time. We will have hundreds more students in them that won't have, and they won't have the funding or staffing for it. Then the fire department will have the same problem. More people all at once, meaning an increase in emergency calls with a lack of funding and staffing as well. For years, they have had numerous cuts and were going to shut down several fire stations. Fortunately, that didn't happen because they found the funding somewhere else. I recently heard that that was a Chehalis tribe. We also don't have enough policing in our area. I also attended the recent town hall meeting that Sheriff Sanders held at Sweet Hall, and he discussed the problems him and his staff are still experiencing with long wait times in large areas that one deputy at a time has to do. We have already experienced a lot more crime in our area with the lack of sheriffs and the building up in the area that is bringing in more crime and out of counters to our streets. Some of you that don't live in Grand Mound are just happy to have stores closer to you. The rest of us are suffering the consequences. People who want to live in a city can move to Tumwater or Centralia, where development of this size should be. The rest of us moved here to raise families and acquired a farm-like atmosphere. Basically, at that point, I asked the community to email you guys if they want to respond to this. Also, if you don't, for the community, if you don't want to have your fire insurance rates affected by even more wait times and want to keep our neighborhood safer by not adding more crime with a lack of policing. I love what Sheriff Sanders is doing, and he is increasing his department, but it isn't there yet, and they can't be in two places at once. Please join us and say no. We need to have time to look into this more and present our case. The owner who is selling this property has been using it as a rental for decades. Her husband recent, or unfortunately passed years ago, and her sons have been helping manage it since. And since then, they only cared to sell it to developers. This is all about money. None of them have lived here in over 25 years that my husband has been here. So they don't care what happens to our community. And again, my name is Casey Taylor. I'm a small business owner with a home business, Studio 198 Photography, and I live directly across the street from here. I also want to add that I agree with Liz and the others. We do not have parks and school, or parks here. We don't have what we need as far as developing this area. I have grandchildren that I take care of on a regular basis, and I have nowhere to take them in town. I have to go to Tumwater, Centralia, Chehalis, or Tonino if I want to take my grandkids, who are too young to be playing in the street. We have nothing to really offer a large residential community like this. And I, I also agree that they should go where that is already in another location, like Tumwater and Centralia. And thank you for listening to me, and I will be forwarding this to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Chris Lester?
No comment.
Jane Burkhardt?
No comment right now. I'm having difficulties.
Okay. Is it Lori in the far upper? Lori? Based on the Zoom? Okay. Ploy Spar?
Hello, I'm, I'm here. This is Lori. I was muted.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you well, and you have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. This is about the proposed development, 198th and 201st. And like others, I was completely shocked to see that there is even a little bit of consideration for a development of this size and density to be put in this area. You know, as everybody's mentioned before, we don't have the resources. The fire department, law enforcement, this, our school bond failed. And if you had come down to see the school, you know, they don't even have enough toilets for the school, for the kids that are in school. So that's a pretty basic thing. You don't even have this. With the new traffic roundabout, the amount of traffic that's being dumped into this area and going up and down 198 T Street, 201st, it's just overwhelming, and there hasn't even been another house put in. So if you imagine what it's going to be like when you do put this dense type of housing there, it would just be a nightmare. And as I've mentioned before, the most dangerous, one of them in Thurston County, the intersection with the trains and Old Highway 9 and T Street and all the traffic coming from the school, it's, it's very dangerous. And I'm sure we have other high-density zoned land in the area that you need to use first before you're deciding to change the boundary line for this particular development. It just sounds, you know, the whole thing just doesn't sound right, smell right, that people weren't notified. And the, and the reason they weren't is because ironically, we're rural, and therefore you won't be notified. So the people that are impacted aren't getting to hear what they need to hear. So I'm just going to have to ask you to please do not approve this at this time. This is something that needs to go in areas that are already zoned for high density, and this is not it. So please do not approve. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, could I get your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Lorraine James. Or Lori James.
Thank you. Okay. Ploy Spar is the name I see.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
You have four minutes.
Okay. I think everybody made a good point. Actually, they made excellent points about why we should not be building 400 homes in the Grand Mound area on that 29 acres. I just, I just have so many little questions of like, why, why did you guys choose this area? Why are people who don't live here are making these decisions? And if anybody ever did the research in the area, in a little town, in the little community at all to see if this area was ready for that type of residence? Or did anybody even put the effort in to see if the communities wanted this type of growth? I, those are just, I guess, the type of questions that I have, like, why, why us? Why that area? This, it's just, we are not ready. And I don't know if we will ever be ready anytime soon. And the school wouldn't notify. I spoke to someone who was on the school board, and they were actually not notified that this was going on. I feel like if they have a saying to this, they will probably say, no, we, we cannot handle that many people. I just, I want you guys to think about the fact that if you were here in my little community, in my little town, would you like that to happen? If your children or grandchildren were here in the community, would you like that to happen to them? I, I just don't think that you would. So I just would really appreciate if you guys could reconsider this, this whole decision, and if you could even wait it out. Let the community have the chance to speak about this before you make the decision. But I, I just really want you to just put yourself in our shoes. How would you feel if this was happening with you and your loved ones? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, names moved around. Kent Markley?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. My name is Kent Markley. I live in West Olympia, and I am here to pop in and do a quick comment regarding Emily Klaus and the fact that she continues to not be reinstated to her board and committee positions. I provided some public comment on this back in October, and I pointed out back then that it had been kind of a while since the initial investigation had started in August, and that she was still not in her seats. And now it's December. It's increasingly difficult for me to believe that the investigation isn't being slow-walked in some sort of a way to punish Emily Klaus for something she didn't do. Or maybe that the investigation actually is complete and simply isn't being released. I hope that's not the case. I prefer to think the best of people. But it's very discouraging that here we are in December, and Emily Klaus still hasn't been reinstated to all of the positions that she is entitled to as a commissioner. Given the fact that the investigation does not appear to have actually done anything to, to find Klaus guilty of anything, and given the fact that it's not super clear to me why she ever needed to be revoked from those positions in the first place to conduct that investigation, I don't see why we don't simply reinstate her now. I encourage you to reinstate Emily Klaus. It's increasingly frustrating to more and more people that the county is doing this. And it appears that there are a variety of other problems in the county as well, that people are looking for reform. Before this gets any spicier, I encourage everyone to reinstate Emily Klaus and to release that investigation if you have it, and to close it if you don't have it. Because I don't think you're going to find anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Piper Lyon? Adam Psych?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, uh, speaking today in opposition to the Grand Mound West UGA expansion in the Womowski plot. I sent you guys a letter earlier today, so I won't go over the entire letter. I'll just kind of touch on some, some things that I, I haven't heard some of my community members speak about. I want to thank my community members, actually, because without them, I wouldn't have the courage to speak about this. I, I told one of my, what, someone who lived next to us, that I feel like I'm a small fish, and I don't really have a voice, and, and they had, they had shown me otherwise. And I think that speaks to kind of the character of our community. I think an expansion like this would be a detriment to the character of our community. We have a very rural character. Thurston County includes big, bigger cities like Lacey and Olympia, but it also includes rural, rural communities too, specifically where we live in Grand Mound, also Tonino. I know Commissioner Wayne used to be mayor of Tonino, so he would probably have a good idea about how an expansion like this would affect a rural community. I think that it, there would be increased traffic issues, like others have mentioned. It, it's a huge loss of a, of a big space where there are, there's actually quite a bit of wildlife in that space. Just tons, tons of birds, eagles. I, I don't know how that would affect that, the environment, but I can't imagine it wouldn't have an effect on that, possibly affecting our soil and maybe even our aquifers. We have, we have great soil around here. I, I live on just over an acre, but we've, we've actually grown some great, some great crops, just, just for our family. I think as far as the culture of our community, it, it just doesn't really fit in the, in the rural character. I also want to touch on the community engagement. This notification only went out to people who have property within 500 feet of the rezoning proposal. But as others have mentioned, that the rezoning would have a far greater impact to our community beyond just those who own neighboring property. My neighbors who live behind me, we share, we share a driveway. They did not receive notification. They drive out. I, I look across the street at this big field, and they share the driveway with, with us in, in, in two lots that are directly behind our, our house. They didn't receive notification because they technically don't have a property line within 500 feet. However, it affects them just as much as it affects me. And beyond, beyond just, just that too, the whole community. On, on a personal note, when my family first moved into the area, there were horses that ran around in that field back there, and it was really quite something to see. They, they don't live there now. The people who had rented the property have, have moved. But it was just kind of a testament to the, the rural character of our community. If the rezoning goes through, it would force me and my family to reconsider if we want to live in the area. And that's, that's a pretty terrifying proposition, that five, five people can kind of decide our fate like that. So in, in closing, I want to urge the, the commissioners to reconsider this rezoning proposal, keeping in mind the long-term impacts on our community's character, environmental health, and the quality of life that many of us have come here to enjoy. That is different than life in more densely populated areas, which other people would enjoy those areas. But as others have said, it's probably would be a better fit in places like Tumwater, something like that. Thank you very much.
Curtis Grammle, I can't read the name. Grammle Spar, Grammle? Curtis, you there?
Unmute Curtis.
Okay, I'm going to try Travis. Okay, I'm gonna try Travis Spar again, give him one more sh- shot. That is not, yeah, better. Yeah. Sorry about that, Mr. Spar, can't, just can't hear you. Um, what last shot for anyone on Zoom whose name did not get called?
Travis, I think your background is taking up what's. If you didn't have a background, it might make it easier, sometimes it, it, uh, stops you from speaking well. You just had a plain background.
Okay, we're gonna move on, sorry. Uh, is there anyone in the boardroom who did not get a chance?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, can you try that again?
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Pretty, pretty gravelly and difficult to understand, but we can hear your voice. If you want to give it a try?
All right, yep, how about, how about now? I adjusted more settings.
I think we can understand you, go ahead.
Okay, I just, uh, since my, my audio is not wanting to work right, I just want to go on record that I oppose the Womowski project in Grand Mound. Um, I've lived here for over ten years. This is not the place to do a big urban development at all. Um, for all of the reasons that all of my neighbors have said, please vote no on this, not subject our small community to, well, the, the terrors of, of making it big.
Okay, thank you, we understood all of that. Um, so, I'm gonna move to Mr. Trobridge, and then I'll get, I see two more hands. Go ahead, Mr. Trobridge.
So I'm Brett Trobridge, I live on Patterson Lake. I've given you a written thing. Um, as I'm sure all of you know, there's been a disaster out at Lake Lawrence. Um, people weren't everywhere to fish, sail, water ski, swim. Why? Because they have a toxic algae bloom for the second time this year, the highest ever recorded out there. Uh, two thousand and six hundred micrograms per liter. What are we doing? This is the same thing we're trying to do on all the lakes. Alum treatments and herbicides. What happens when you do that for forty years? They sink to the bottom. The dead plants that you kill sink to the bottom, the algae does too, the algae that you put out with the alum treatments, and they give off nitrogen and phosphorus. Um. And that fertilizes the algae blooms. It's totally counterintuitive. Even the guy at our meeting said that, that that was a problem, that what, by killing this stuff you're fertilizing, the very stuff you're trying to get rid of. So. You know, everyone says the definition of insanity is if you keep doing the same thing over and over, and it doesn't work, and you just keep doing it 'cause you don't know what else to do. Well, that's what you guys are doing. You're, you're poisoning our lakes, actually. That, the most sensible interpretation of the data might be conservatively that alum treatments and, uh, herbicides don't work. But the more compelling inference from the data we have is that they actually make it worse. Why is it that you, that those two lakes, Long Lake and especially Lawrence Lake, have way more of this toxic algae than any other lake that hasn't been treated? Um. So it doesn't make any sense to me. You know, you guys fired Cole Webster because you didn't want to, anybody to supervise these self-appointed tax of, uh, assessors that have not been elected, but they're part of the county now, according to you. Well. You, you said they can't use glyphosate on our lake, and I certainly appreciate that, but they're still arguing that they wanna hurt, use herbicides to clear out this channel. I'm totally against that, and that's certainly against any McAllister Springs principles. So if you wanna overrule that, you're overruling McAllister Springs, and it will be totally fair for me to accuse you of poisoning the water supply, which I certainly will, if you allow herbicides, at least on South Patterson, because North Patterson isn't in that, uh, McAllister geosensitive zone. So no herbicides, it actually makes things worse. Do it with harvesters, do it with bottom screening. Have your stupid boat channel, although I think you should have some sort of supervision there too. They, what they said was they were gonna benefit wildlife, frogs, eagles, you know? What they're really doing is they're like, having something for their so-called regatta, these thirty thousand dollar boats that they parade around with, with the two hundred horsepower engines on a five mile an hour lake. That's what they're doing with our money, our five hundred dollars a month per house for ten years? You're funding a regatta? Lane? And furthermore, the trestle wasn't even included in the whole thing, so how can you possibly put most of your effort under the trestle when it was actually excluded? Um, and why was it excluded? Well, it's because you, Mr. Mensur, you, Mr. Edwards, and you, Ms. Mahia, said it was fine for these properties to be excluded when I brought it up before we'd even had the vote. Remember, I brought that map in here, and I said, look, all these properties are excluded, and you guys laughed at me and said, ha, 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 we thought you'd be happy. Why didn't you say at that point, all properties should be included? Because apparently you don't have any respect for the rule of law, is the best that I can tell. My time is up.
Hello. My name is Lena Karas, I'm an elementary education teacher. I'm here to show my support for District Member Five, Emily Klaus. I echo what other community members have been saying. Emily is an essential community member who has done nothing but benefit those around her. I encourage those around her in the workplace and throughout the community to treat her with the utmost respect that she deserves. Anyone who knows Ms. Klaus knows she has a heart of gold and is willing to sacrifice her time and energy to help others. I echo my support for Emily Klaus again, and have the utmost faith in her abilities to serve as a district member in all capacities now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit. And then I'll get Mr. Casino.
Good afternoon, my name's John Pettit, I live out in Rich Road. Wow, this is what we call representative government. The people are coming and talking to you, and the reason why there's such intensity is they don't recognize that they're being represented. That's what it is. Why are they here? Because they don't think you're listening. So I applaud them for showing up. It's the only way we're gonna make a difference. Um, on the issue of Ms. Klaus, I'm gonna throw in a little two, two bits of my own. I happen to be probably the most involved person with close oversight, and I can tell you, there's not a person on the board that couldn't be subject to being removed because of the choices they've made. Fiduciary responsibility comes with doing the budget work. You violate that budget, that fiduciary responsibility, laws say you will be removed. And I happen to know a couple of you who may very well end up facing that. We have a state audit coming up. You're gonna have to face the fact that the results of those audits represent exactly what has happened because of your decisions. You know? I, I have great confidence in a new county manager here, but I'm gonna point something out. Your decisions are not his decisions. He's managing in order to come and draw conclusions and decisions out. So, uh, when you decide to do certain things, because, well, maybe some other staff person tells you to, that staff person isn't the person you're supposed to represent, it's all these people out here. I don't get it. Is it paid so much that you don't think anybody out here is important anymore? You think you're supposed to rule over us? So, a little thought about this whole thing. I, with Ms. Klaus, get her back on board, we've all made mistakes, you're all subject to potential liability if somebody wants to sue you because you drove your car wrong, or, or you've, uh, you've humiliated people or belittled people from being up here. Some people here even work as firemen for a full-time job at the time that it's against county policy, and yet they get to collect a wage from that and from here. And you let them zoom in. How pathetic is that? You guys either gotta get your stuff together, or don't be commissioners, decide you're gonna start representing all these people. It's, it's ridiculous. Now, we have, we have things that have occurred, we, this last year, we had a vote, we decided we're gonna bring in some public safety sales tax to help these people with more police protection. And what happens? All of a sudden, now we want to taint and use those tax, that tax revenue for purposes other than what was prescribed in the election. So here's one more little part I'll give you. If you choose to move forward and use that money for purposes of bonding, a building, which the building itself has nothing to do with public safety, nothing, then I will go ahead and seek to have the entire tax removed because you weren't trustworthy to handle it properly. It's a choice. We've had so much shell game economics right now, the county could go bankrupt. And our planning department, hopefully it can get healed before another major lawsuit comes up. I had phone calls on my way here today about that. So, anyway, start representing the people, listening, thank you.
Mr. Casino?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name's Eric Casino, and I live in the Lacey UGA. And, um, I came here today to talk about the CIP a little bit, and since we just had a public hearing yesterday on the 2025 CIP, I thought that since it's fresh in our mind, we can kinda take a look back at a problem that we have with the 2024 CIP and this, this some, one of the decisions made under it. And I wanna kinda start this out, just to remind everybody that the purpose of the capital improvement program is to plan. And this all starts with community planning, and it works through the long-range planning department, through the comprehensive plan, and then capital facilities program, our capital facilities plan, and then the CIP. And so planning is really what we need to focus on here. The legislature requires us to plan. One of the reasons for requiring planning is that it's a foundational element of public notice. This is really the first way that we can tell the citizens what government wants to do, is by looking at these plans. With that in mind, the 2024 CIP did not include a new sheriff's building. It didn't even hint at needing one. There is things in there about courts and jails, emergency services. Even the coroner and the auditor had stuff in the capital improvement program, um, concerning what their future plans were, but there's nothing in there about a new sheriff's building. And moreover, there is not a level of service analysis that is done on this, and if it was addressed in a maintenance and space needs assessment plan, that's not included in any of the plans that are available to the public that I can find, and I would think that I dug pretty hard, I couldn't find it in the CIP, I couldn't find it on the website, I couldn't find anything else. So if there is an assessment or some other needs analysis that was done, has not been done. And I'm not wanting to take the position for or against a new sheriff's office. I don't really have a strong opinion on that. I think if the community values and prioritizes a new sheriff's office, then we should work towards doing that. But I am concerned about the process on how we get there. Um, and moreover, this creates a couple of pretty big problems in my estimation. The first one is it's a clear violation of county policy, and I'm gonna read this policy off to you, it's from the comp, um, the comprehensive plan policy, one F, policy five. The addition of an entirely new facility not anticipated in the capital improvement program will require formal amendment to the comprehensive plan. And a formal amendment happens once a year, that's why, it's probably a factor in why our cons- consent items today are forty-two items long, which is a whole nother story of unreasonableness. But calling this purchase a land acquisition instead of a new facility is absolutely disingenuous. It, this is, this is not a land acquisition. To call it anything other than a new facility to try to get around our own policies and plans is ridiculous. I think that the state auditor's office, um, would be interested in this kind of thing if we don't, uh, are, are a little more diligent about it. And they audit to state law, county code, and county policy, so why, while this might not end up in court, it could certainly end up at the auditor's office, 'cause they do enforce our own policies against us. And if the county is, uh, doing things counter to that, the, um, state audis, I don't know what the state auditor would tell us that we need to do, but with the track record of major findings every year, year after year, I don't know how long we're gonna have major findings all the time, but this could rack up to be another one. The second problem that I see with this kind of thing is this erodes trust in government. If the county doesn't follow its own policies, how can it expect anybody else to follow county policies? Hypocrisy is not on our mission statement. We have transparency and accountability up there, and I'd like to see hypocrisy removed from even being part of that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who has not signed up, would you like to give a public comment? Curtis? Uh, you already, I already had your public comment, sir.
I don't think Curtis, I think Curtis was not able to come off mute fast enough.
No, he was, he gave the kind of, uh... Curtis, did you have something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can hear you. Your, your audio's a lot better. We'll give you three minutes, but I think you took a minute.
I wasn't able to speak earlier.
Okay, I thought you were, but go ahead.
Okay, so, um, just real quick, um, I mean, for the Grand Mound rezoning, just wanted to throw my two cents out there. Um. I followed this history of it since this whole rezoning and over the last couple decades, and I saw how the tribe worked with everyone, and they put a lot of thought into the rezoning down here. And, uh, this lot, the twenty-nine acres for, scheduled for rezoning, was never included. I understand it's a citizen-initiated rezone. So the only people interested in this is the owner of the lot, out-of-town owner of the lot, and the developer. Um, there is, just want, wanna note that there's zero support for this down here. Your own survey shows no support from nine-eight-five-seven-nine, and, uh, I'm not sure why this is gaining traction to, um... So hopefully you've been reading the emails, um, looking back at the history, and not just catering to one developer's interest, and looking at our community. Uh, half mile away from this lot is an active dairy farm. Uh, half mile away is Maple Lane. Um, those exist, 'cause this is rural resource down here. Five, ten, twenty acre lots, which allows the Grand Mound Prairie to remain in existence. You know, so that, and that's what this area is if you don't live down here, this is the Grand Mound Prairie, you know? And I've heard the county say they support the prairie and open space, you know, and the diversity that comes along with that. Um, I don't know how many know Grand Mound is the Grand Mima Mound. This is the largest prairie, original prairie in the area. And this is just going the opposite direction of what I thought this county stood for, which was to keep high-density zoning in urban areas. And this, if you wanna talk about urban sprawl, you know, find a prairie, open space, zagland, and turn it into a little mini urban area. I'm not quite sure what planner is really on board with that. So other than one interested in developing this property for profit. So, other than, uh, reviewing the materials people have sent you, and, you know, looking at the fact that no one down here supports this issue, uh, that's pretty much all I have to say. And of course, uh, no one's responded to my email if anyone wants to go over any of the information or get more detail. Now, I'm, I'm glad to talk, the community's glad to talk, and I know, uh, I know Ms. Klaus was able to talk to some people down here. Um, other than that, I'm not sure who else is reaching out to learn more information, and not just vote yes or no based on one planner saying, let's go with this, even though we voted no forty years before on this, so hopefully that changes. Um, and that's all I have to say for today. And that's all I have to say for today.
Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? Mister Travis, I can't read that name. Want to take one more shot?
You're on mute.
Did you hear me now? You should be able to hear me. I've got full green on my audio now.
We can understand you even though it's super, you're like Darth Vader or something. But go ahead. I think we can understand.
So like I said, I live here on T Street. The area that you want to rezone is right behind my house. Like everyone else has said, there has been no crime study done. We've got one deputy down here. The schools cannot handle it. I have two kids in school. The traffic down here now, since you guys have opened up that roundabout, is atrocious. I went out this morning to go get my recycling bin and there was a guy doing at least 50 miles an hour down T Street. I could not imagine the impact of this whole area if you allowed 400 more houses, 464 or whatever you're proposing, to be in this area. I mean, Old Highway Nine and T Street is one of the worst intersections in Thurston County. There is no infrastructure around here to support that many people. There's no parks. There's nowhere for my kids to go ride their bikes. There's nowhere for local kids to go play. It is absolutely asinine that you would allow 400 more houses to be put into Grand Mound. The infrastructure around here just cannot support it. I would encourage all of you, all five of you, to come down here to Thurston County, south, south Thurston County, as, you know, Sheriff Sanders likes to put it, which we do things differently around here. Come down here, take a look around, and see if we could put 400 more families in. We just can't. So unless you're willing to do that, I just understand that all you're going to do is vote to whomever gives you the most money. But I guess I'm just asking you to vote with your heart and vote with your brains. And vote no on this. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. I think we've covered everybody now. So we will move to item two, which is county manager update.
Thank you, Chair and the Commission. What I wanted just to say is, you know, we really appreciate the community coming out and speaking about the CPED item that's making its way through. We just want to note for all those who are interested, this is a process that's initiated by the landowner, not necessarily by the Board of County Commissioners. And this is exactly the process that's outlined so that community can weigh in and the process allows for community comment or board consideration. And so I think it's wonderful to have community engagement, but just to note that it's not the Board of County Commissioners or CPED staff that has initiated this item. Only other item that I have, I just wanted, this is our first public meeting since we made the selections, a few key staff members, and I wanted just to call them out. We really appreciate their work. Many of them were interims in their roles prior. We went through a competitive process and they were selected. I'll start with just acknowledging Dr. Jen Freihite, our Public Health and Social Services Director. We want to congratulate her. Jen, you want to just say a few words so the community can kind of put eyes on you and start to get to know you?
Great, thank you for that. I'm Dr. Jen Freihite, and I very much want to thank all of you today. I appreciate being here. I'm very excited to get going. I've had 22 years in public health across two states in leadership roles, have responded to several different emergency responses from a large water main break to natural disasters to, of course, communicable diseases in public health. And I bring a lot of knowledge and experience to be able to apply and understand this department as being Assistant Director for 14 months, then interim director for six months, and now as director. I'm very excited. The most important thing that I see here is that we have amazing people in the department, having all the community resources, and so many people in the community that understand public health and are proponents of the community. And then all of you as well, the Commissioners and all of the leadership in the county that are really supportive of public health. So I'm right where I want to be. I'm very excited and I can't wait to jump in to collaborate with all of you. So thank you.
Join me in welcoming her.
Thank you.
And I'll be quick. Next, I would like to congratulate Summer Miller, our Budget and Fiscal Manager, and went through a competitive process and was selected, and has already begun to see some prime time with walking through the budget and stepped right into action. So Summer, thank you so much for being here.
Hi, good afternoon, Summer Miller. I am very excited to have been selected for this role. I feel that the county is heading in a really great direction and leadership has great vision, and I am really happy to be a part of the changes that are upcoming. So thank you for the opportunity, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And then last but certainly not least, Ashley Arrai, our Community Planning and Economic Development Director, who has worked within the department for a short time, but then has now stepped up as was interim. I know that I have really appreciated her depth of understanding and knowledge. She's worked in different places throughout the state, also brings a great balanced perspective of understanding both the development side and the needs for the environmental awareness. And so we're excited that she was selected through a competitive process, has agreed to step into the position. Ashley, please say a few words if you'd like.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am full of gratitude to be leading the Community Planning and Economic Development team. Our department is where we empower communities to both create and realize their visions. We're really unique in that. And so in the coming years, I look forward to expanding our conservation efforts, working alongside our community partners. I'm also excited to address longstanding concerns regarding our codes and our permitting processes. We do have a strong foundation to build on, thanks to a lot of the folks in this room, and a tremendous group of folks dedicated to addressing the challenges and opportunities ahead. So thank you for your ongoing support of our work.
Commissioners, lastly, I'll just say each of those three areas represent key components for the county. So I'm very grateful that we have leaders that have come through internally, risen up, were the best candidates by the interview panels and recommended for selection because we believe there's some great work as we continue to grow as a county and making some adjustments and enhancements in each of those key areas, what we do in our budget, what we do in our CPED department, and our PHSS department, all of which is such important to our community, such important to the staff and the residents of Thurston County. So we look forward to working with you and your policy direction and them as leaders to continue to move that forward the rest of this year and into 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. So that brings us to consent agenda, and there's a couple of things to address here. We have items one through 44 on the amended agenda.
Yes. The upgrades to this building, did you find anything that was good, sir?
Yeah, thank you. So we took a look at all of the voucher list items and we can verify that there were no general fund dollars used for any upgrades, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you. And then I guess, I think we mentioned last week, since we have a pretty lengthy consent agenda with a sort of clearing a backlog of voucher items, and there was actually public comment about that today, could you make sort of an explanation as to why we see this somewhat unusual consent agenda?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, a majority of our consent agenda today are the voucher items. Those normally come through in real time and then are presented on agendas. The reason there are so many on this agenda is the county recently initiated a migration to a new financial accounting system. And that financial accounting system has, it's comprehensive, and so it touches a lot of different aspects. And we're working through that transition. In the migration, oftentimes there's a pause on data coming in. We pause so that we can transition everything and then work through the data. And so we were able to work on getting the data over, migrating it, verifying it. And so that's why there was a bit of a lull. We anticipated that, but now the auditor's team is back on track with submitting those. And so we'll start seeing them in real time come onto the agenda.
Okay, are there any requests from Commissioners to remove any consent item from the consent agenda? Hearing nine, I'll call for a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve dissent items one through 44. Nonavailable motion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? That motion is passed. That would bring us to our department items. And we do have a public hearing, just FYI, at 3:30. We will be recessing this meeting and taking that public hearing at 3:30. But we're going to take a couple of items before that. Let's start with Sheriff, item 4A, Contract Amendment for Inmate Housing. And I saw Sheriff Sanders on Zoom. Are you presenting this, Sheriff?
Yep, that's me.
Perfect, you're up.
Yep, so just in a short summary, this is a backup contract with Lewis County Jail for overflow housing. We have not booked anyone in there since, I believe, 2019, but the jail population is starting to stack up just a little bit. We're over 300 inmates now. So again, this is just a contingent contract that we routinely look to extend each year.
Questions for the sheriff from the board? Commissioner Klaus?
I have one question. Sheriff, you mentioned that the population in the jail is increasing. Do you have any thoughts or insight as to why that's happening?
Lot of crime. I mean, the reality is, is that most of the people sitting in our jail, quite frankly, are there for much more serious crimes. We've got an overflow in the MAX unit, so currently we actually don't have enough space in our MAX unit, which is where our single cells are. We've got a lot of mentally ill individuals in those cells, so we have one person taking up two cells. As a result of that population constraint, we have had to move individuals who would normally be housed in the MAX unit into the dorms. So actually, this weekend and moving forward, we're going to pay the overtime and start double staffing that dorm with a second corrections deputy because quite frankly, it's tense in there. We have a lot of career armed criminals. We have people in there who have Class 8 felony convictions, things like that. And yeah, so we're just constantly trying to move people around in the jail and classify them so that they're safe, that they're not getting into fights and things like that. But our jail population levels are still far below what they were pre-COVID. Right now, I think we're at just over 300, and pre-COVID, we were at 480, I believe.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the Contract Amendment with the Lewis County Sheriff's Office for Contracted Inmate Housing at a rate of $103.69 per inmate per day and for the term of January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025, and authorize the sheriff for designated to execute the amendment and future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second to approve the Contract Amendment for Inmate Housing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing nine, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff Sanders, for being here. Next up is Commissioner Department, item 5A, 2025 Property Tax Levy Certification.
Good afternoon again, Summer Miller, Budget and Finance Manager. And the slide, please.
I think we're working on a different slide.
Thank you. Okay, so Washington State Constitution limits the annual property taxes imposed on individual property parcels to 1% of its true and fair value or assessed value. Counties are limited to $1.80 of $1,000 of assessed valuation of regular general fund current expense collection. That may be increased to $2.47 and a half cents with limitations. Property taxes are levied to deliver services authorized and desired by taxpayers. Thank you. There is a box that shows you the property tax formula. Next slide, please. So this is a repeat of the overview from yesterday, and it shows that the levy certification for 2025 for Thurston County is $53 million. That includes the 1.5 million in road diversion, 4.7 million in the road levy shift to the general fund. Conservation futures at $1.7 million. Medic 1 with lid lift at $21.5 million and roads at $26.5 million, and there'll be the road levy shift from that particular levy. Next, please. And for your information, the timeline is in August, we receive preliminary assessed valuations, which are distributed by the county assessor. It's ongoing until the certification. Preliminary levy amounts are calculated, also ongoing. In September, taxing districts receive notice of deadlines to certify the budgets and estimates to the board by November 30. And preliminary county assessed valuations and levy amounts are modified with each updated to valuations. In October, prior periods of October 1st to September 30th, net refund levy amounts are distributed by the county treasurer, and we apply that to the levy calculations. And then in November, the certified values are distributed by the county assessor to the budget office. That is still subject to change. In December, the Board of the County Commissioners must certify to the assessor the total amount of property taxes to be levied on or before the 15th day of December. So next actions, if the board, please, would, you've been properly given notice of the public hearings held on December 2nd to consider your revenue sources, increases to property tax revenues for 2025, and the next steps are to increase property tax revenue from the previous year in addition to increases from new construction and property improvements and increases to state assessed property values. And I am open to any questions, if you have any.
What is the property tax rate today?
The rate of collection for the county is currently at 75 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation.
What's the maximum allowed by law?
$1.80.
Any questions for Summer?
I move to approve the resolution to certify the 2025 property tax levies for the general fund, roads, medic one, and the conservation futures to be collected in 2025 and authorize a road levy shift in the amount of $44,700,000 and a road diversion to the current expense of $1,500,000. I accidentally said 44,000, $4,700,000.
Motion is there second?
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the 2025 property tax levy certification. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing nine, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think at this point, we need to move to our public hearing related to, maybe we can get one more item in. Actually, let's do one more item. Let's do 6A, and then we'll go to our public hearing. 6A is Community Planning and Economic Development. Correction to Resolution 6331 and Ordinance 6332, Greg Cuyo Park, Lacey UGA. Ashley Arrai, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ashley Arrai, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. The Lacey Joint Plan was updated and adopted by this board on December 12, 2023. During the 2023 review of the proposal, two parcels that are part of Greg Cuyo Park, owned by the City of Lacey, were accidentally excluded by error. This action would authorize the clerk of the board to correct the acreage and maps within the resolution, sorry, resolution and ordinance that was referenced. Sorry, resolution and ordinance, that was referenced. And this correction is permitted under section eleven of the adopted resolution and ordinance per the prosecuting attorney's office and does not require any additional public process. So we appreciate the board making this correction on the record in a transparent fashion.
Questions for Ashley? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to authorize the clerk of the board to correct Resolution one six three three one and Ordinance one six three three two to update the acreage and map for the Lacey UGA expansion to include all of Greg Cuyo Park.
Second. Motion in second to correct Resolution six three three one and Ordinance six three, one six three three two. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we're going to be in recess while we address a public hearing set for three thirty. I'll just do the intro here. We are addressing A thirty, it's a docket item, Less Restrictive Alternative, or LRA, Community Housing Code update. Purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing Development Code update. This project is item A thirty on the official twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Development Code docket. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined us in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. This information, joint to join this public hearing remotely, has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch our live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Anna Rodriguez, Associate Planner, will provide information on the topic, answer any board questions. I will read names on a sign-up sheet, if I have one. And then we will have the folks who are on Zoom, we will call your name. You do not need to sign up in any special form app. You have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. So I am going to open the public hearing. And we will ask Ms. Rodriguez. Oh, first Ashley, okay, I'm reading my script.
Sorry. Just wanted to do a brief introduction. Ashley Arrai, Director of Community Planning Economic Development. The topic of Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing for sex offenders is a big topic for both our community as well as the state. The code updates we are presenting today would establish a transparent permit review process as well as basic fire, life, safety standards for these types of facilities. Our legal counsel has advised us throughout this process to ensure we're staying within the sideboards established by current state law. It's important to note, the planning commission has recommended looking more broadly at ways the county can oversee these facilities. We've also heard from the community that they have concerns with the new state laws that we're operating under and their impacts on local communities. Both of these broader conversations may continue on separate tracks. Today, the code updates that we've developed and are bringing before the community as well as the board are a critical first step in establishing safeguards for the community if these proposals, our proposals, come before us in the future. At this point, I will turn it over to Anna, who'll go through a brief presentation. She's done a great job shepherding this project through the public review process over the past year, and we're both happy to answer questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Anna Rodriguez with Community Planning. As Ashley said, this hearing is on the Less Restrictive Alternative LRA Community Housing Code Amendment, which is item A thirty on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Development Code docket. Oh, perfect, okay. In Washington, there are two types of facilities into which courts can place sex offenders. Secure community transition facilities operated by the State Department of Social and Health Services and Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing operated by a private provider. In twenty twenty-one, there were amendments to state law regarding privately contracted LRA community housing facilities. And in twenty twenty-three, as I'm sure you're very well aware, a private firm under contract with the State Department of Corrections proposed an LRA community housing facility outside Tenino. At the time, we did not, and we still do not, have anything in our code to define permitting processes for these facilities. The Tenino proposal made us aware that there are limited permitting triggers to review such proposals and no opportunities for community input. In response to this, we developed a package of amendments to address the new permitting process, excuse me, and noticing requirements. These amendments include the creation of a definition for LRA community housing and outlining standards for LRA community housing facilities owned and operated by a private provider. These facilities will require a special use permit and hearing examiner approval. Each proposal will be subject to a formal public hearing process to allow community members and the public to voice their opinions on the proposed facility. The code changes will apply to all of Thurston County, including Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater urban growth areas.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. Much of the discussion and public comment we've received throughout the process has been regarding community and public safety. The planning commission recommendation urged the board to go beyond the requirements in state law and emphasized community concerns around compliance, permitting, security, and safety. Because this update follows an amendment to state law, the board has considered the legal sideboards to this code update. In response to the planning commission and community concern, the board requested staff add additional language to the code requiring that these private LRA facilities contract with the Department of Social and Health Services. Requiring such contracts will hold contractors accountable to the conditions in the court orders.
Next slide, please.
The planning commission held two work sessions, one on April seventeenth and one on May first, twenty twenty-four. A public hearing was held on June fifth. And following the June fifth public hearing, the planning commission held two more work sessions before taking action and providing a recommendation. On June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend the adoption of the proposed amendments. However, in addition to that primary recommendation, the planning commission issued a second unanimous recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to explore all ways to address community concerns around compliance, permitting, security, and safety in Thurston County Code for LRA community housing facilities. These recommendations were discussed during the two board briefings that took place prior to this public hearing.
Next slide, please.
I apologize, I did not quickly enough to get this to Amy. We received four public comments during the planning commission review stage, and we did receive three additional comments today. All comments prior to today were provided to you all and considered during the work sessions. The three comments today included critiques of the twenty twenty-three proposal down in Tenido, Tenino, excuse me, which really underscores the importance of establishing a new process and noticing requirements for these facilities. Staff provided notice for this public hearing by publishing a legal notice in the Nisqually Valley News on October thirty-first. A webmailer was sent to all interested parties on October thirtieth and November thirteenth, and a press release was issued on November twenty-second. Staff updated Thurston County's community planning webpage with all available relevant documents to this hearing.
Next slide, please.
The primary action before the board today is to close the public hearing. However, the board may take final action today to establish new permitting process and noticing requirements for LRA community housing facilities at the board's discretion. Thank you, I'm available for questions, as well as Director Ashley Arrai.
Questions for Anna? Okay, thank you. Go ahead and get started. On my sign-up sheet, I have Representative Dan Griffey, who's here. You're up. Thank you for being joining us.
It's a, it's a different position I'm in, Commissioners. Usually, you're testifying in front of me here. So for the record, my name is Dan Griffey. I represent the great people of the Thirty-Fifth Legislative District, which covers parts of Kitsap County, all of Mason County, and a good portion of Thurston County. And I'm here to support the efforts that your staff just outlined on getting it right for citing of LRA housing in Thurston County. The state is not getting it right. Our policy, we have a coalition of legislators that have identified that our current policy and current laws leave way too much to be desired. And I encourage all of my counties that I represent to take, use their zoning powers to make more predictability and safer decisions on the location and whether LRA or Less Restrictive Housing for sexually violent predators can happen in Thurston County. I support the, the work that we did. We included staff from all departments in Thurston County. As a matter of fact, I think the reason we haven't passed the bill yet is because we need to get out, go look at more counties. Thurston County had a little more say than maybe the rest of the counties thought that they should. But with that, I, I offer myself up to questions if any of the commissioners have questions. But I encourage the adoption of this ordinance to help protect our mutual constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank, thank you for all the work that he has put into this because he's been at it for a long time. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else who didn't have a chance to sign up that wanted to provide public comment on this topic? And seeing no one in the boardroom, Zoom, I see Mr. Lester. Let's call you guys again. Adam Zeke, Psych?
No comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then there's RG and RG Thurston, might be the same person, might not? Or might be a staff member? Okay. Think we've got it covered, then. Very good, then, is there a motion to close public hearing? I mean, the board, we could make a motion if we want to. Does the board seek to take action on this item today?
I would.
Okay. Any concern about it, any board? Okay, then I would contemplate a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can take the legislative action. I need to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the code changes?
I move to approve an ordinance adopting changes to Title twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two of the Thurston County Code to regulate Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing.
Second.
Just one second on that.
I have also Title twenty-three on here.
There's a discrepancy between the proposed action on the hearing script versus the agenda. Does it also involve Title twenty-three?
Okay, let me, I'll change my motion. Move to approve an ordinance adopting changes to Title twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three of Thurston County Code to regulate Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the code updates for this docket, item A thirty. Any discussion on that?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I really don't feel this goes far enough to protect the community the way they really ought to be protected to get around what the state legislature has done to our communities, especially our rural communities where some of this is going to be placed. But this is a step in the right direction so that we can move forward and we can make modifications as time goes on to make it better. So I'd just like that noted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Edwards stole my, stole my words. I was going to say, the only complaint I've heard, this doesn't go far enough. But I also recognize this is a step in the right direction, and Representative Griffey is in support of this. And I know he's been working with the folks that were really, really affected by this personally. So I appreciate that work as well.
Okay, no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us back to our business meeting. And we will kick off at three forty-three PM with item seven A, which is Central Services Contract Award for Thurston County Mottman One Ballot Processing Center Project C three four one oh one. Tony? Rick? All right, Rick, you're up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Rick Thomas. I am the project, Capital Project Manager. And we're here today to ask the board to approve the award of the project for the auditors' ballot processing center out at the Mottman complex. And it's, I'd like to award it to Construct Inc. in the amount of three million, sixty-nine thousand dollars. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Rick? Okay, ready for motion?
Move to award a contract for the Mottman One Ballot Processing Center, project number C three four one oh one, to Construct Inc. of Tumwater, Washington, for a total of three million, sixty-nine thousand, and authorize the interim director of Central Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion second to award this contract. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank staff. They actually saved us a lot of money from the estimate that we originally got. And I think that if, I don't know if economic times are changing, but it came in under, we had a lot of bids. And that means our folks are spending time working with those contractors out there. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments or discussion? Okay, motion second, correct? All right, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Public Health and Social Services is up next. Eight A, Contract with Family Support Center for Affordable Housing Acquisition.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alex First, Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. I am here this afternoon to ask you to approve to a contract with Family Support Center of South Sound in the amount of one million dollars for the acquisition of land and property located at two four four zero, three one five eight, and three five two zero, Seventh Avenue Southwest, Olympia, for development of affordable housing and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent. Background on this item, in August, Family Support Center of South Sound, a nonprofit here in Olympia, submitted an application to the Regional Housing Council's Affordable Housing Advisory Board Opportunity Fund. The Opportunity Fund applications are reviewed by the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board. They reviewed this application and recommended to the Regional Housing Council to fund this project. The application includes a funding request for the million dollars to acquire the three acres of property located at the address I previously mentioned. This property currently has four existing housing units, duplex, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom house, three-bedroom, single-family home, and a one-bedroom, single-family home. Family Support Center intends to maintain these four existing units as affordable rental housing until they are able to develop, demolish those houses, and develop a sixty-to-one-hundred-unit multifamily affordable rental housing development for families with children and survivors of domestic violence and also highly vulnerable seniors. The funding for this project will come from the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, state and local physical recovery funds. They intend to close on this property on December twentieth, which meets the county's deadlines for the SLR funding. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
To approve a contract with Family Support Center of South Sound in the amount of one million dollars for the acquisition of land and property located at two four four zero, three one five eight, and three five two zero, Seventh Avenue Southwest, Olympia, for development of affordable housing and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Service to execute the contract, any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion in second for this Affordable Housing Acquisition contract. Any discussion on that motion? Commissioner, you have?
I would really like to thank Alex and Tom for their hard work with this. When we first found out about the ARPA, they really jumped on board and reached out to our different partnering agencies to see where we could do that switch around. So just thank you so much for all of that work that, you know, you have all done for this. This is very important.
Thank you.
Motion, any second, so I will call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, last but not least, we have our Public Works Department bringing up with a series of items, starting with nine A. Contract Award Twenty Twenty-five Overlay Project, CP nine eight two two five.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Steve Bricker, the Public Works Construction Manager. On November seventh, twenty twenty-four, we received a total of four bids for the twenty-five overlay project. The capital project number is CP number nine eight two two. The capital project number is CP number nine eight two two five. These bids were received in response for a call for bids that we advertise in the Nisqually Valley News, the Olympian, and the Daily Journal of Commerce, and they were also posted on the Billards Exchange website. The low bid was received from Lakeside Industries out of Centralia, Washington, in the amount of one million six hundred ninety thousand dollars. This project is planned to be constructed in the spring of next year, twenty twenty-five, and the roads that will be overlaid include one hundred and eighty-third Avenue between Sergeant Road and Old Highway ninety-nine Southwest, Old Highway nine Southwest between Carper Street and SR twelve. And this project includes grinding two inches off of the existing pavement and then repaving back that two inches over a total of three point seven eight miles of roadway using fiber reinforced asphalt. We expect that this will extend the life of the pavement another fifteen years, and the project is funded with ARPA funds as well as REIT II funding. This project is in the twenty twenty-five Public Works budget and in the draft TIP program for twenty-five to twenty thirty, and in the CIP program as well. And it's in alignment with the county's strategic plan Initiative Eight to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. Do you have any questions?
Ready for Steve? Nope? Okay. Ready for motion?
I move to award the contract for Twenty Twenty-five Overlay Project CP nine eight two two five to Lakeside Industries in Centralia, Washington, in the amount of one million six hundred ninety thousand, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders to this project due to unforeseen conditions, only up ten percent of the contract.
Second. Motion in second to award the contract for the overlay project to Lakeside Industries. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Brings us to item nine B, Contract Award for Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Joe Flahuda here, Senior Water Resource Engineer with Public Works. Here to request award of the contract for the Boston Harbor Water Main Replacement and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project to Tapany Incorporated of Battleground, Washington. So a little background on this item, on October thirty-first, a total of seven bids were received for this project, and bids ranged from about two point two million on the low end to our, our low, low bidding contractor to upwards of three point one million dollars. Engineers estimate for this project was, was two point seven million dollars. And then some additional background on the project work. So Thurston County owns and operates a, a number of water and sewer systems, including one in the Boston Harbor community, and this project will, will look to replace portions of undersized piping in that community. So looking at replacing older PVC pipe with, with, with newer, newer PVC pipe, and then also making various improvements to our sewer collection system to minimize infiltration and inflow into the collection system, which will help us to meet water quality standards moving forward. And this project is in the current Public Works budget and the current capital improvement program and is in alignment with the county's strategic plan Initiative Eight to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community, and Initiative Nine to support environmental health and climate stabilization. With that, I am available to answer any questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
How many sewer systems do we operate in the county?
We operate four sewer systems, three of which are regulated by Department of Ecology and then one which is regulated by Department of Health.
And we inherited those through state law because they were operating inefficiently. Is that right? Three of them, anyway.
In the case of the, the Olympic View System and the Tamashan System, yes, that is the case.
What about the Boston Harbor system?
So Boston Harbor, we, it was formed through a local utility local improvement district by petition, petition of the property owners in that community.
Right. But then when we ended up taking it over, wasn't it because it was underperforming?
We, we actually didn't take over the Boston Harbor system. That was, that was one that the county has run since the offset. We took over the water system in the Boston Harbor community.
Okay. That was the portion that was failing then at the time?
Correct.
And so the Department of Ecology doesn't give us any options, but to take that over, as far as I know, they won't take it over. Is that right?
Correct. The buck stops with, with the county.
Yeah. I, I just want the public to know that we're not in the utility business, and in fact, would rather not be in the business, but we find ourselves in this situation, so we're doing the best we can with what we've got. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ready for motion?
Mr. Chair, seeing that the last three items are Public Works items and the one that would get the most discussion is the one that we've just been presented on, I'd like to make a consolidated motion for the last three items, and then we could go over them in that motion, if that, if that's okay?
Without having any presentation, you're saying?
We've had several presentations, and I can read them off. The, you know, one is to, is to close down a road for a limited amount of time that receives, that gets about thirty-two cars a day. The other one is approval to go out for sealed bids, which we'd have then come back to us to approve the bids. So I'd like to make a consolidated motion to approve, to approve Public Works items B, C, and D. B being moved to award the contract for the Boston Harbor Main Replacement and Influent Infiltration Reduction Project to Pani Inc. of Battleground, Washington, in the amount of two million one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred eighty dollars ninety-five cents, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions, only for up to ten percent of the contract. Item C, move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Cooper Road Southwest at Mox Chehalis Creek Culvert Replacement Project CP six one five five four. Item D, move to approve the resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Cooper Road Southwest at the crossing of Mox Chehalis Creek for a single time period, not to exceed twenty weeks within the same time period of May first, twenty twenty-five through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And if there's any questions on those, I'm sure Matt Hunselman can answer all of them.
I'll second.
Second, second, and second.
I have a motion in a second for approving items nine B, C, and D. Any board discussion or questions before we take a vote?
I, I would just like to point out, we've had plenty of discussions on this prior.
So with that, I'll call for the vote on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We've just approved nine, B, C, and D in one fell swoop. So let's go to Commissioner Reports, which we have just a few minutes for before we enter executive session. Commissioner McHugh?
Yeah, I, it's been four weeks, but I'll, I'll keep it short as I've been reporting. I attended the WASAC meeting. Been attending inner-city executive meetings. Attended the WASAC Conference, where I attended the Timber Board of Directors and Legislative Steering Committees. Attended the Law and Justice meeting and the Law and Justice Data Walk. Attended interviews for inner-city transit for the Authority Member, Authority Board, and for the CAC interviews. Attended the Inner Branch Advisory Committee, where we received judicial branch updates as well as legislative branch updates. From the judicial side, the big item that we're still waiting for is the public defense and waiting to see what the court decides. For legislative branch, Senator Peterson reported that there would be a fourteen billion dollar shortfall over the four-year budget, operating budget, and an eight billion dollar shortfall in transportation over the ten-year budget. Of course, that will more likely affect us, but executive branch update, I gave previously a report on that. I attended the WASAC Conference on some of the areas that I attended where the future of clean energy, building IT together, facing fentanyl, and how county governments can support recovery residences, EPR implementation, lessons being learned in other states. I attended the North Star, which is kind of a similar model that Skagit County is doing in terms of housing and homelessness and regional participation. Attended the Joint Transportation Committee meeting and attended the thirty-two-hour work weekend that San Juan reported on, and the role of counties in economic development. I have also attended the National Association of Hispanic County Officials, attended study meetings, as well as Racial Equity Inclusion Council. We met with the co-chairs. Attended the Patterson Lake Association Annual Meeting, as well as the Regional Housing Council meeting. Attended the Local Water Resources Future Use and Construction of Freshwater in, held by the League of Women Voters, and I attended the OSHO Cultural Community Center three-year celebration, where me and previous county manager Ramiro Chavez got honored for our work with them and helping them get funds.
I'll make mine real short. I attended the Washington County's Insurance Fund Meeting, and the only thing I'll report of note on that is that the cost of insurance is going up, not been set yet, but it's going up, and we all better be ready for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Call.
Okay. As Commissioner McHugh said, it's been four weeks, so I'll try to keep mine quick, although I did do a lot over the last four weeks. As far as boards and committee meetings, I attended the Regional Housing Council meeting, Joint Animal Services Commission meeting. For Jazzcom, a couple updates and highlights were, as far as animal surgeries go, they brought their surgeries in-house as of the summer of this year. In October, they had one hundred and seventy-five surgeries, which put them over one thousand for the year. They're working on some legislative priorities, including no cat D clause, which could be something that we implement at the county level, which I thought was interesting, so could be something for a conversation in the future. As far as an update on their building, animal arts, we are expecting an assessment from them in early twenty twenty-five, and they will be putting in a regional capital request for two million for the design of that with the state. So that's, I'll have more coming soon on that as well. I had meetings with elected officials. Let's see, I had meetings with council members from Tomwater and Olympia regarding the Comprehensive Plan and Growth Management Act, one-on-one with the sheriff, auditor, and district court staff and judges. As far as community groups, I met with Arrest and Jail Alternatives and members of the Community Advisory Work Group related to climate issues in the county with Commissioner Mensah. For events, I attended a mutual aid pop-up on Thanksgiving Day down at Sylvester Park. We fed over sixty people downtown, and that was a really touching event we do every year. I did a farm tour, an agricultural tour. That was, I have a lot of stuff I did on that, but I'll, I'll save that for another time. The one thing I want to give a shout out to is the Freedom Farm Program in Olympia as a school alternative for high schoolers to spend half of their school day on the farm and taking classes, and I did a tour with the students, which was really nice. Attended the Adoption Day Ceremony at Superior Court. I was there, featured speaker. And I also participated in the Superior Court Family Juvenile Center Tour. I had constituent meetings regarding the Comprehensive Plan, Public Safety, Built-for-Zero Initiative, and I met with community members in the Grand Mound area, who we heard from many of them today. That's all.
Thank you. I will just say lots of stuff happened, and we defer any specific report. Building Code Council, Sensing Guideline Commission, Lot Study, WASAC Conference, lots of meetings about DNR-related issues and trails and lakes. So I'll just leave it with that. So that brings us into our agenda. We're adjourned. The board will go into executive session. I'd like to take five minutes if we could, just to use restroom, prep some water. Being here, let's say at four-ten, start our executive session.